Good afternoon. My name is Mark Peeling, 491 C Street. I'll be extremely brief. I think staff did an amazing job on the summary, so there's -- I don't have a lot to add. I did have a lot to add, but I would like to say that I know that you received a petition with a lot of signatures on it, but I believe the concerns that were on that have all been answered by experts. Those concerns were written by a layperson without expert expertise in that area, and I think that's pretty much been laid to rest, in my opinion. They went to some extraordinary -- two labors went to some extraordinary efforts to derail this project and pretty much blanketed the neighborhood with letters and door-to-door, including my houses where they showed up six times, and to try and get them to oppose, and neighboring zip codes. I did have some issues with the community planning group. One person who has been working with one of the neighbors in particular is very against this project, has publicly said that. He has a vision of Point Loma that he said, "Be as pretty as Southampton," and my project doesn't meet those requirements. So he's just, from day one, he's been against it. They've never -- they didn't offer any alternatives, no negotiation. He did make a comment, well, perhaps they'd only build two homes, but of course they wouldn't do that, and he just left it at that, so didn't even respond. This person had a lot of influence. But two of the people at the meeting that did vote in favor said they couldn't find anything to vote against this project. So I don't really have a lot to add, because, like I said, I think city staff just did an amazing job summarizing everything. We worked long and hard on this for three and a half years, tried to cross every T and dot every I. At the community planning meeting, only one speaker spoke out against the project at the vote. I've only been contacted by one person in the public on this project, but as I said, there's two neighbors that have just gone to extraordinary means and written letters and complained about, "There'll be trash cans on trash day, I don't want to look at those." There'll be, you know, everything, mostly on the geology and access, which, you know, those are kind of for experts. We meet all the code on all of that, so I really don't know what else I could say about that. I do have my engineer here and my geologist, if you have any questions with them. Les Reed and Tony Christensen's engineer, and that's about all I have to add.
All right. Well, good, because your time's up.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Welcome back to the Planning Commission. We're going to go to our last item, the Peeling tentative map. Before we get into it, though, I want to make you aware of a few things. One is that one of the commissioners, Commissioner Pearson, has already left. Another commissioner, Commissioner Golda, will have to leave by what time? By 2:00. I have one hour of his time. I need to be gone by 2:45. So we'll be down to four commissioners. Technically, we will still have a quorum. We will not have vice chair or chair in place. I would think that in the event that both of us are gone, it would fall to the senior member, Commissioner Smiley.
No doubt he's the senior member here.[250.01][250.01](Laughter).
Yeah, to chair the remainder of the meeting. I bring this up in case, as a part of this, someone wanted to consider instead trailing this to the next meeting. Now, you've spent the whole morning listening to somebody else's stuff. I have a very large number of speaker slips here. I'm not seeing nearly as many people in the audience. I'm confident we could get through this by 2:45, when I have to leave, but I just want to make everyone aware going in what the limitations are, to be fair to you and the remainder of your time. So unless other people come flooding back, we can probably get through public testimony. The other thing I would say about public testimony is that particularly when there's quite a few people lined up to speak one way or the other, my history here tells me that the general arguments get made with the first speaker or two, and thereafter, there's a lot of repetition. And it may be entirely possible for speakers, after the initial arguments being made, to just say, "Everything I was going to say has already been said," and allow us to move forward more smartly. So I put that out there as well. Anyway, I want everyone to kind of understand going in. I want to be respectful of your time, and I'd like to make sure that we had as many commissioners here to make a decision as possible. So with that in mind, I think we can press forward. So this is a process for hearing. Any individual wishing to speak on this item must fill out and submit a speaker slip to the Planning Commission secretary. It takes four affirmative votes of the commission to approve, conditionally approve, or deny the application. And with that, we'll go to staff report.
Good afternoon, Chairman Nasland, members of the Planning Commission. My name is PJ Fitzgerald. I'm a project manager with Development Services. Also in attendance today is the technical staff review team. As mentioned, item nine is the Peeling project, number 239065. I'd like to start with an overview of the site and the surrounding properties. The .97-acre project site is located at 3340 and 3328 Harborview Drive between Bangor Street and Martinez Street, and lies within the RS-17 zone coastal overlay, coastal height overlay, and is located within the La Playa neighborhood of the Peninsula Community Plan area. This is a view looking north. The surrounding development includes a mix of large, single-family homes of various ages and architectural styles. The project site itself is comprised of three legal lots and has been previously graded and is currently developed with two single-family homes, which were built in 1948, neither of which is historic. Over many years, the La Playa neighborhood has gradually transitioned to a more dense neighborhood character through the subdivision of larger lots into smaller parcels, which are then developed with single-family homes. This view is looking west. This shows Talbot Street to the right of the screen, which is the major east-west roadway that traverses between the San Diego Bay and the Pacific Ocean side of Point Loma. The project site has dual street frontage. It's the only property that has full dual street frontage from Harbor Drive to Martinez Street on the north side. Martinez Street is on the downhill portion of the property, and Harbor View is on the uphill southern portion of the lot. Although dedicated as a public right-of-way in 1953, Martinez Street in this location is only a pedestrian throughfare and is closed to vehicular traffic due to a previous landslide in this area in 1981. This is the view looking east. This is another view showing the relationship between Harbor Drive and Martinez on the back portion of the lots. City water, sewer, and storm drain facilities for this area are located within Bangor Street, which dead-ends at the top of the slope in the cul-de-sac toward the bottom of the screen. However, the utilities do run downhill and meet up with other city systems in Talbot Street. This is a view looking south, shows the rear undeveloped portion of the site. Environmentally sensitive lands do exist on-site in the form of coastal sage scrub, which is considered a protected biologically sensitive resource. So the project is also, besides getting a coastal development permit, a tenet of map, a neighborhood development permit, it's also getting a site development permit for the removal of this sensitive coastal, sensitive biological resource. On a policy level, the community plan designates this site for single-family development at a density of nine units per acre, and which would be the equivalent of nine homes on this site. The residential element of the community plan has an objective to provide a balance of residential types, densities, and prices, emphasizing new development and redevelopment at higher densities in neighborhoods able to accommodate growth without adverse impacts to the immediate area or the community as a whole. Proposing five units, the project is consistent with this single-family residential land-use designation, and will meet these housing goals by adding three homes to the community. Terms of project scope, the project will subdivide a .97-acre site comprised of three existing lots into five parcels, construct three new single-family homes. The project meets all lot configuration development standards and requires no deviations. So I'd like to go through a few slides to illustrate some of the project features. If you could go back real quickly. These are the two sites in question. With the subdivision, they would now have five lots, and then three homes would be constructed on the rear portions of the property. If you can go ahead and click. Thanks. Okay. And then additionally, an existing garage on the west side of the property will be demolished, and a new garage will be constructed behind the existing home in that location. This will make way for a 20-foot-wide access road to serve that property existing on parcel one, and additionally, the three new homes to the rear. This is a more detailed version of what the homes would look like. They'd range in size from 2,623 square feet to 2,747 square feet. They're designed with the garage, living, outdoor deck, and kitchen spaces on the ground floor, and the bedroom areas within a lower level tucked underneath to take advantage of the slope, the downward slope in that area. Each home would have two parking spaces within a garage, and also two additional spaces to meet the Land Development Code requirements. This is the architectural elevations and site sections. The upslope facades of the homes are designed to be one-story in height, and you can see here the two-story on the rear end facing downslope. Approximately .27 acres of coastal sage scrub will be removed with grading activities. The geotechnical investigations, and as shown here in this brown shaded area, is an area that was identified by the geotechnical consultant as a shallow remnant landslide area, which will be removed during future conventional grading activities. Any loose soils on-site will need to be graded and recompacted to the satisfaction of the city engineer. The geotechnical investigations performed by the project consultant concluded that the project will not result in any significant geologic hazards, but this remnant area, which is approximately eight feet in depth below the ground surface, will be removed as stated. There's the biology area in the rear of the site. And then another feature is the access driveway. That existing -- go ahead and click. The accessway will come off of Harbor Drive. There are two existing curb cuts on Harbor Drive. They will be reconstructed to meet current city standards. The western portion on the bottom of your screen shows the proposed access driveway. It's 20 feet wide, goes down the western portion of the site, and then follows east to serve the three homes in the rear, and also the one remaining home on parcel one. There is a turnaround at the end of that driveway also. The storm drain and sewer utilities will run downslope along the western property line, traverse the Martinez Street right-of-way, and connect to an existing system located within Bangor Street. So that's the storm drain, and then in green is shown the sewer line. City staff performed environmental analysis under the California Environmental Quality Act, and due to the coastal sage scrub on-site that will be removed, mitigation is required in the form of paying into the City of San Diego's Habitat Acquisition Fund at a ratio of one to one. That is part of the mitigation monitoring and reporting program associated with a development project, and would be implemented along with the development permits if this project were to be approved. Regarding the community planning group, we recently, it came to our attention that the motion by the community planning board on April 18th, which was 5-3 with two extensions, to recommend denial of the project, actually failed because they needed six members to vote in the affirmative on that motion. So technically, there is no official recommendation from the community planning group. However, the concerns identified during, in the meeting notes and during that public meeting included access, risk of slope failure, fire safety, and community character. The risk of slope failure, as I previously mentioned, the geotechnical investigation report concluded the site is stable and would not result in geologic hazards. The applicant's geologic consultant is here today to answer more detailed questions. Regarding fire safety, City of San Diego Fire Rescue Department staff has reviewed the proposed project to ensure compliance with the fire apparatus access roadway requirements in accordance with Fire Protection Bureau Policy A081, which a copy was in your staff report as attachment 11. The project meets this policy by providing a 150-by-20-foot fire access roadway. It is the same as the project access driveway. However, in this portion, it is designed to withstand 95,000-pound vehicle load. It also provides hose pool from that location underneath the 200-foot minimum. At the top there, it's at 190, 195 feet, and then around the other side of the building is, I believe, 188 feet of hose pool, and that is the farthest building from this point. So obviously, the two below that also meet that requirement. There's also a new hydrant being installed on Harbor Drive, right on the project frontage. And there are also conditions in the development permit that require compliance with this fire policy. I'd like to just get into a couple of slides regarding the issues of access and community character, because they are related in some ways. This slide shows the existing lot pattern of the neighborhood, where it says San Diego, that is the larger of the two parcels. It is notable that the project site has retained its original lot configuration from the original 1905 subdivision map, while all the properties around it, for the most part, have subdivided since that point in time into smaller lot configurations. There's also an attachment in your report that describes this condition. There's evidence within the existing pattern of development in the neighborhood that larger lots with hillside features have been subdivided into smaller parcels, and then developed with new single-family homes of various architectural styles on the rear portions of the lot. So therefore, the proposed subdivision of the property and construction of three new homes would not seem to be out of character with existing neighborhood development patterns. This aerial photo shows typical access and community character features. Along the west side of the, sort of the left side of your slide, the red tile roof is the, one of the, the larger of the two homes of the project site. There's an existing edge condition along that western driveway, which exists right now with high hedges and site walls. That existing driveway would be extended to wrap around the existing pool, and in that location would be where the three new homes would be located. Immediately east of this house, of this property, is the second home that's part of the project site that will be retained. And then one lot over to that, which is the white home with the tile roof, is another property that has a long driveway feature that leads to a home in the rear, and then fronts onto Martinez Street. And then one, or to the right of your screen, there is a, it's not really a street, it's more of an alley, a public alley, but that has also been subdivided to serve multiple properties in the rear portion there above Martinez Street. So in summary, the idea of a long driveway coming off of Harbor View Drive is not, is part of the existing pattern of the neighborhood already. This slide here shows views west from Martinez Street. This is the downslope portion. So you can see on the eastern portion of Martinez Street, the slope is lower, and you can see structures abutting Martinez Street. As you travel west toward the project site, which is more the top and lower right-hand photo in this slide, the vegetation increases and the slope increases, and on the bottom right, it's hard to tell with the shadow, but you can actually see there's the, a tunnel of vegetation that is the pedestrian pathway that goes through to the other side of Martinez. This slide, this slide shows the two existing homes in question. The, as you can see in the background between the two homes, you can see on the far side of Talbot Street in the distance, and these are the two homes that will remain. The finished floor level, or the finished, the grade at the sidewalk is approximately 255 feet in elevation. The finished floor level of the homes range between 240 and 243 in elevation, which would put them about 12 to 15 feet below the street level. So at one story in height, fronting on the north, sorry, on the facade fronting Harbor View Drive, they'd be minimally seen from Harbor View Drive, public right-of-way. And then just quickly, to wrap it up, just a couple of slides of existing architectural features on homes in the neighborhood. The top right is the project site, those two homes. Couple of slides are taken directly across the street, ones around the corner, and the bottom right slide shows the driveway on the property immediately east that has the long driveway to the new home in the rear. Staff has received letters of opposition, which were forwarded to the Planning Commission earlier. The, in summary, staff believes that all the findings can be met to approve this project, and therefore, staff recommends the Planning Commission certify the environmental document and approve the project subject to the permit conditions and the drafts attached to your report. This concludes staff report.
Okay. Thank you. Clarifying questions? Commissioner Wagner?
Mr. Chair, there was a Google map that city staff had that would be beneficial for me if, when we do have public testimony, if it's appropriate, that they could just point out where their house is. That would help me out a lot. So if we could maybe have that Google map up, or you see fit to have that up to where the community members could show us where they live.
Okay. You have a copy of my presentation, I believe. If you could tell me which slide number that is, I'd be happy to put it up.
I think you had one where you showed the kind of lotting patterns, or that, oh, I see, the image there. Yeah. That would work. Okay. Okay. Was that it, Commissioner Wagner? Okay. Commissioner Golda?
PJ, just a clarification. On the right-of-way from Martinez Street, that is just a footpath right now. It's not an improved, you can't connect down the Talbot, correct?
That is correct.
And this project doesn't vacate that right-of-way, doesn't use the vacation of the right-of-way to accumulate the square footage to qualify for any of this, or anything like that?
No. The right-of-way is not being changed whatsoever. The city did, according to some records we found, they did entertain the idea of vacating that sometime in the early '80s, but that apparently was never followed through with, and the right-of-way remains as it is, and they never cleared the remnants of the landslide either. So all that's left is a pedestrian pathway.
Okay. And then what's the average slope on the downhill side, sort of from, I guess you'd call it the existing pool that you can see in that picture, down to the bottom? Just generally speaking, what's the average pitch of that slope?
I do have a slide on that. Let's see if we can. If you give us one second to pull that together.
Would it be correct to reference page five of the staff report under the geologic stability for the slope?
This is actually the hillside analysis map. I do believe it's in your, the drawings in your report also.
All right. Perfect. And then final question on the fire department, as far as the access goes. So the idea is that the fire department does not go down the new private driveway, and they use protection based on hose pool from the top, or what was the approach or methodology for approval on that?
The fire marshal is here. He can answer that question.
Perfect.
Ron Carter, Fire Plans Officer for San Diego Fire. The driveway coming from the street is where I took the access from. So from the street, 150 feet in, and then this hose pool from there.
Okay. So the idea is you're not taking a truck down there, and there's no turnaround, there's no T-bone, and then...
If the fire access roadway would go more than 150 feet, then a turnaround would be required.
So it's designed right now at 150 feet exactly?
Right. It meets the minimum requirements.
That's exactly what I wanted to figure out. Thank you.
Clarifying questions, Commissioner Smiley?
Yes. First, I have a question. Do you have a speaker slip for anybody from the planning group, Peninsula Planning Group?
Yes.
Yes? Okay. I'll have a question for you then.
All right. Commissioner Kirov?
Thank you. I wonder if you could go back to the slide that shows the view from Martinez in our package. It's number 20. That one. Okay. I wonder if you could just do that again for me, because I'm trying to figure out where the Peeling property is on these slides, and I didn't, I think I missed it when you...
This is actually taken from the curve of Martinez as it slopes down and comes back around. This is just to show that there is an existing home here that sits above Martinez, and then the Peeling property is actually down here somewhere. It was very difficult to get a photo. I do have another slide. If we could go to...
Can you tell me first, before we leave this one, what we're looking at on the two bottom ones? So they're not, they're not the Peeling property either?
No. The Peeling property, let me get the cursor here, is actually right around this location, but the pedestrian pathway that fronts their site is overgrown. It's got like a canopy of vegetation, so you can't really get a very good view of their site except for aerials. But I do, if we go to slide 30, we could take a, that's kind of what it looks like. The top left is a car that sits right at the edge of the pedestrian pathway, homes on either side of the closure, just use the Martinez Street, you know, to park. So you can see on the bottom right is from the, from Bangor Street, so coming up on the west side. And in between that is a vegetated canopy that runs probably two-thirds the length of the Peeling property, and then, so it's hard to get photos. But this sign here showing the resale is actually for this property adjacent to the Peeling property. So the Peeling property is right in this location, and then where this car is, is where the canopy starts.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay. No further clarifying questions? We've got a public testimony now. I'm going to start with those in favor of the project. And again, given the time constraints that we have regarding commissioned content, I'm going to limit every speaker to no more than three minutes, unless you have somebody ceding time to you. So you need to organize your thinking before you come to the microphone, please, and make sure that you try and make your salient points within the three-minute timeframe. There are some lights up there to let you know when you're getting close. So if we could try and be respectful of that, that'd be great, and make sure everyone has a chance to get in here. I'm going to start with Mark Peeling.
Good afternoon. My name is Mark Peeling, 491 C Street. I'll be extremely brief. I think staff did an amazing job on the summary, so there's, I don't have a lot to add. I did have a lot to add, but I would like to say that I know that you received a petition with a lot of signatures on it, but I believe the concerns that were on that have all been answered by experts. Those concerns were written by a layperson without expert expertise in that area, and I think that's pretty much been laid to rest, in my opinion. They went to some extraordinary, two labors went to some extraordinary efforts to derail this project and pretty much blanketed the neighborhood with letters and door-to-door, including my houses where they showed up six times, and to try and get them to oppose, and neighboring zip codes. I did have some issues with the community planning group. One person who has been working with one of the neighbors in particular is very against this project, has publicly said that. He has a vision of Point Loma that he said, "Be as pretty as Southampton," and my project doesn't meet those requirements. So he's just, from day one, he's been against it. They've never, they didn't offer any alternatives, no negotiation. He did make a comment, well, perhaps they'd only build two homes, but of course they wouldn't do that, and he just left it at that, so didn't even respond. This person had a lot of influence. But two of the people at the meeting that did vote in favor said they couldn't find anything to vote against this project. So I don't really have a lot to add, because I, like I said, I think city staff just did an amazing job summarizing everything. We worked long and hard on this for three and a half years, tried to cross every T and dot every I. At the... At the community planning meeting, only one speaker spoke out against the project at the, at the vote. I've only been contacted by one person in the public on this project, but as I said, there's two neighbors that have just gone to extraordinary means and written letters and complained about, "There'll be trash cans on trash day, I don't want to look at those." There'll be, you know, everything, mostly on the geology and access, which, you know, those are kind of for experts. We meet all the code on all of that, so I really don't know what else I could say about that. I do have my engineer here, and my geologist, if you have any questions with them.
All right.
Les Reed and Tony Christensen's engineer, and that's about all I have to add.
All right. Well, good, because your time's up.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. Let's see, Les Reed, you did say you're gonna speak, and then Anthony Christensen, you said, available to answer questions, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, all right, we may ask you about...
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. I'm gonna touch back on a little bit of what the staff report said, repeat that. I'm just gonna focus on landslide versus superficial soil stability. We did place a 55-foot-deep boring up on the peeling property at the location in the area where building will take place, and in going down that boring, I located an actual ancient slip plane, only eight feet deep. It was actually healed, it wasn't greasy, it wasn't slippery, it was healed with iron and manganese oxide, and probably stronger than the sandstone above or below, but it was an interesting feature from a geologic point of view, that we found this little hanging mass up there, eight feet deep, no reason not to take it out as part of normal grading operations, and that was our recommendation. And that is the only geologically interesting feature up top, other than that top soils and things that have to be regraded in a normal manner. Ten years prior, I think it was August of 2002, I was able to go down a 52-foot boring. I was invited to go down a boring that was placed on the lower Martinez Street, just above, I believe it's called the Miller Home, and that was an investigation being conducted by another firm, but they invited me to give a second opinion. In that boring, which is northwest of the Miller property, we did find a slip plane at about 21 feet in depth. That slip plane, the sliding surface was coming from the northwest, which would be from the property to the west of Peeling and Miller, and headed directly towards the Miller property. Eventually, we became the geotech engineers for that western property, and we had to, on that project, deal with that little remnant landslide that had taken place and make sure we gave recommendations for stabilization if that western property ever was developed. While on the Martinez Street property, and this is kind of an important factor relative to the photograph that was put into the mitigated negative declaration document, there's a photograph showing a lot of soil material coming from Martinez Street down onto the Miller property. While doing that boring, I observed that the cut slope for Martinez Street there, and later, our work on the next-door property, revealed a significant depth of superficial loose sandy material that we would call slope wash, very unstable materials if you load it with water or have heavy rainfall. So the photograph that's in that mitigated negative deck is from those materials coming from probably the Martinez Street old road fill, but as well as the natural soils that were subject to that kind of failure. That failure and what took place there has nothing to do with the geology on the upper portions of the peeling property. There was also comment or concern raised about failures that had taken place, or a failure on Talbot Street, on the south side of Talbot Street. Talbot Street's an old street. Geologists and geotech engineering, we did not have that in San Diego County until the mid-'50s. The older roads, they made steep cuts, they're overly steep, they're subject to failure, especially when you have uphill properties and uphill hillside, putting our El Nino-type water and rainfall directly down on the cuts. They fail, we have to deal with them as they occur, they're not landslides, they're due to construction practices that are no longer acceptable, and we go in and take care of and repair them when necessary. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. We may need to call you back. Okay, now I'm gonna move to, that's everybody in favor of the project, I'm gonna move to those opposed to the project. See, there's a bit of an organized presentation, I believe, starting, let's see, starting with Jay Schumaker. It's Jay Schumaker, Frank O'Dwyer, and Stan Adell, and...
I'm sure he wrote.
Well, I'm just reading what his on-the-slip's given to me, and I believe it looks like Cindy Ruffinock and Glenn Ruffinock are ceding time, or either those two people here?
They need to be here.
But they need to be here when we're doing this in order to cede their time, so if they're not here, I can't. So I'm gonna have to hold the group to nine minutes. Again, I don't mean to be a stickler about this, but we're gonna lose some significant help here, and I don't, I want to get this accomplished while we have people here. Don't start just yet. What's your question?
Can I see my time?
What's your name?
Ida.
Yes.
Ida.
Okay, that's fine. That's helpful.
Can I see my time?
Yes, what is your name?
Anne Walker.
Anne Walker, okay, that's fine.
I'll see who.
I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
And you're gonna cede to who? I'm sorry, what was your name again? Okay, you're ceding...
Another lady back.
Hang, let me do it one at a time. You're also, okay. One other? Yes, what's your name?
Jeannie O'Dwyer.
All right, yeah, here. Okay. All right, so with that, all right, so are you, are you...
Another gentleman here.
All right, and what's your name, sir?
Walker.
First, Jess Walker. All right. All right. All right, is that, and all of you are ceding your time to this organized group of three, or to any, some individual?
Jess Walker's to myself, I believe.
Okay. All right. So right now, I've heard one speaker to you, you have six minutes. I've got several to you, sir, so we'll get there when we get there. Okay? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Commissioners, for your service. I'm Jay Schumaker, 4904 North Harbor Drive. I'm speaking as an architect from Point Loma. I'm serving my third consecutive term on the Peninsula Community Planning Board. At the apex of my career, I was the student body president of Cabrillo Elementary School, which is a block from this project. In our project review committee review, Chris Veem coined the term "microneighborhood" in his denial of this project on community character grounds, especially related to specific neighborhoods. And that soft spoken voice of his, Alan Jones, was as vehement as I have seen him in concurrence. Our committee voted to deny this project 4-1 with an abstention. I was the one. We hadn't seen architectural plans yet, and I was thinking of a tight cluster of French hillside homes with great views of the city. Of course, that would need a cluster of variances, not to mention the blessings of Janet Richards, Frank O'Dwyer, Dennis Connor, Robert Jackson, several other neighbors. This proposal of three steep lots on a long driveway behind two fine homes on Harborview Drive seems to be an accumulation of code interpretations. Lots fronting on what I understand to be a vacated street at the bottom of a cliff? A long, narrow driveway, but no turnaround? An unstable hillside and earthquake zone with no second opinion of geologic safety? Questionable emergency access? Long-range planning and parking issues on Harborview Drive? The Peninsula Community Plan would preserve La Playa as an area distinct for its large, quiet homes. This project subverts that vision for that area. And we are witnessing the thoroughness of our DSD that Rob Quigley's been referring to recently. City staff never abbreviates their review with premature refusals. Instead, we work cycle issues until we finally earn the staff recommends approval award. Newbies ask, "How can we deny a legal project recommended by city staff?" Well, Alan Jones, Chris Veem, and others of us realize that under this system, community character can be subverted by accident. This is one of those accidents. Thank you again.
Frank Dwyer, I think you have several people...
Yes, if you could pass it. Thank you.
So if I could ask you, your request on time, you have enough, it seems, you asked originally for six minutes, but you have enough...
I think I have more than that, I believe.
Yeah, you definitely have more than that, so I'm...
Thank you, Chairman Naslin.
How much do you need?
I would probably need, let's go for 10, or a little over 10.
All right.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak before the Commissioners, and I really appreciate this. My name is Frank O'Dwyer. I live at, reside at 3316 Harborview Drive, and I'm right below the project that is in question. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of myself, my neighbors, and the concerned residents of La Playa about a proposed project 239065, known as the Peeling Tentative Map. Two hundred and eighty residents of this community have signed a petition which we have presented opposing the Peeling Tentative Map. The three major areas of concern are, one, access for fire protection and life safety; two, community character and the negative impact of increased parking on Harborview Drive; and three, the risk of slope failure. I'd like to address the fire and life safety concerns first. The Peeling Project proposes a fire engine access of a 20-foot-wide roadway that would terminate about 150 feet into the property, where the fired engine would stop at a steel bollard in the middle of the driveway, then a fire hose would need to extend 200 feet to the homes at the end of the drive. The closest fire hydrant is 434 feet away from Harborview Drive and Bangor Street. That includes 84 feet away from the site entrance, 150 feet to a right turn, and an additional 200 feet, making a total of 434 feet from the water hydrant to the proposed homes. There appears to be no provisions for the required 70-foot diameter cul-de-sac nor the 120-foot hammerhead as specified in FB Policy 08, A081. The gentleman that spoke from the fire department sent this to me, and basically what it is, is a fire access roadways. The policy also states that it appears that there's no provision for a 70-foot diameter cul-de-sac nor a 120-foot hammerhead as specified in FB Policy 808-1. The reason I'm repeating that is because the policy also states that a road over 300 feet would need to be 26 feet wide and 100-foot diameter cul-de-sac and 150-foot hammerhead. The access road is 350 feet long, ending at a property line of the neighbor only a few feet away from the end of the access road. Without necessary provision, the possibility of emergency vehicles turning around is completely eliminated. Secondary emergency vehicles such as ambulances, EMT, and police vehicles cannot gain access to the property if a fire truck is already parked in the private drive, and the property owners cannot get out. These are some of the fire and safety issues voiced by the neighbors. Another major concern of the neighbors is in regard to community character. The Peninsula Community Plan recognizes La Playa for its distinctive large homes and larger lots. The First American Trust and Title and Trust Company compiled a study of 642 homes and found that the average home size is 2,921 square feet, and an average lot size is 10,986 square feet. There are no single flag lots in the community with three houses on it behind two homes and a 20-foot-wide roadway extending 350 feet. This does not fit with current character of the neighborhood. The proposed project home sites combine home and garage to arrive at 2,000-plus square foot on an unusable lot size with adjacent homes less than 10 feet apart. There are no usable front or backyards, and each lot has a 35-degree slope to an 80-foot near vertical drop to Martinez. The planned accessway is only 20-foot wide, parking will be prohibited on the drive, though it will necessitate all service, delivery, and visitor parking to be diverted to Harborview Drive. The proposed homes have Harborview Drive addresses, but from front above Martinez. In contrast to prior maps, Martinez is now a through, is not a through street, and can provide no pedestrian or vehicle access to the property. Trash collection, mail delivery, residential landscape services, and home visitors will be required to utilize Harborview Drive. Maneuvering up the steep incline of Harborview Drive is already a crowded and narrow street when cars and trucks are parked at the curb. You might see that picture that I handed out, and that's a normal picture of the day's events that happens on Harborview Drive. Risk of slope failure. The subject property, this is an important item, and I almost should repeat it, but the subject property is within 200 feet of an existing earthquake fault zone. The property consists of filled dirt on sandstone, although the project engineering firm regards the slope of the project as stable, past history tells a different story. There have been three major slides from the property to Martinez. In May of 1981, the city vacated a portion of Martinez below the site because of unstable hillside. After that incident, the city designated that portion as a walking path only. Now that Martinez is not a through street, emergency and other vehicles have no way of turning around and must back out. Two immediate neighbors on Martinez have experienced landslides and flooding onto their properties. Milan Miller, who lives below the peeling property, has had mud and debris come up to his front door, and I'm including a picture of that event, and the handouts that I gave you have that picture on them. Another neighbor, Carmen Fulbright, who lives next door to the Mr. Miller, has experienced flooding throughout her home several times, necessitating the expensive creation of a retaining wall to protect her property. While theoretical calculations deny the possibility of slope failure, actual experience demonstrates otherwise. The city of San Diego is currently erecting a retaining wall on Talbot Street to deal with the previous slope failure. These are some of the reasons that the neighbors of the proposed project remain deeply concerned and opposed to the project. The Peninsula Planning Board voted to deny the peeling subdivision on April 18, 2013. Thank you very much.
Mr. Dwyer, could I ask you, we have the picture up, can you have somebody point out where your house is?
Yes.
Are you east or west of the...
I'm west. I'm actually, actually, I'll tell you where I am. My house went the end of the drive at the 300-foot, the 200-foot that comes down to the third house, the end of the drive comes to my backyard, with two feet back, or several feet back, but it comes, it stops at that point.
So that would be east of the property?
Yes, okay. I'm on the, if you look at the map there, the long hallway, the long driveway...
Yes.
That I think PJ had mentioned?
Yes.
That's, the house that she mentioned was a new house. That is my house, and it's 19, I thank you for the compliment, but it's 1928 that house was built. was built. And the property adjacent to it, at one time, I have a land, a bit of land there, and at one time I was looking at subdividing my lot. I went to the city and I went through the process of it, and I decided because of the way, and at that time Martinez was an open street, I decided it wasn't practical nor right to do that, so I did not, I did not subdivide the property. There was some mention of also that there's a lot of subdivision going on in the, in the neighborhood. That is not true. This, and you're welcome to see this report, because I had the report done by Title &amp; Trust Company, First American, and it has all the detailed study in here that you need to see. The thing that is important about this is the neighborhood and the, and the type of people that are living in the, in the area. This project is, well, I was, I went through detailed through the 65-page, you know, information, and some of that information we'll have to take another look at, because it's a very dangerous road, and, and there's a, there's a possibility that the city might have some liability there if they go ahead with this because of the small, the small entry road, and I think some people call it a fire access, because it's only 20-foot wide, and if one car is parked on the road, it stops all the traffic going to and from that property.
Understood, sir. Is your address on Harborview Drive?
It's, yes, it is. 3316 Harborview Drive.
All right.
I'm right, actually right below the property. Mine was the one that, when you saw that, it was gated, and I'm in the back part of the property.
Okay. I just wanted to understand where you were.
Thank you, thank you, mister.
Forgive me, sir, I am locationally challenged. Sir, can you show us on a map where your house is, because the cursor's going everywhere.
He's circling it right now.
And it appears that if I am locationally challenged, does your house have a view right now of the bay, sir?
Yes, it does.
Would it be blocked if they put the houses there?
Yes, it would.
Perfect.
No, the bay is behind you.
No, if I, no, it would not, I'm sorry. The houses are in back of me. That, as a matter of fact, when I mentioned to you that the, in my, my house faces, the property, or the peeling property is directly behind me, the road, the access road would come to the back of my, actually my backyard.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
It appears from the, the lot layout, is your lot a flag lot?
My lot is a flag.
So there are other flag lots in the neighborhood. It just so happens you just have one unit on your flag lot.
That's correct.
Okay, that's fine. I just wanted to clarify, he made a comment earlier, there were no flag lots, but it was no flag lots with three units on it. So that's just a clarification.
Yeah, the comment was, no, there are no flag lots with three units on it.
Okay, but your, your lot is a flag, your lot is a flag lot.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Doctor.
All right. We're going to carry on with Stan Nadell.
Good afternoon now. I am Stanley Nadell. I live at 3333 Harborview Drive, which is directly across Harborview Drive to the south of the proposed project. You've heard most of the objections and concerns from the neighbors. First, I would like to commend the reports of the planning commission. I was very impressed with the comprehensive and detailed nature of it, though I respectfully remain somewhat skeptical of some of the assumptions and conclusions. And so I will briefly, I hope, just address some of these things again to emphasize them. The plot for development is described as a 0.97-acre plot on which it would be possible to build nine houses, and therefore the five proposed houses are described, I think, as a generous concession. In fact, a big portion of the plot is a significantly sloped area with about an 80-to-85-foot vertical drop and an acknowledged greater-than-25-degree slope. So it would be very difficult to build those remaining houses on that property, and I think the report from the Development Services Department described that as topographically constrained. It's also described as a dual-frontage property, and again, the proposed building would be on an area that has neither frontage to Martinez Street nor Harborview Drive unless utilizing this somewhat unusual fire access roadway. The fire access roadway was described by the fire department as being only 150 feet long because there is an artificial blockade at the 150-foot mark to stop the fire engine, and therefore it doesn't have reason to proceed the remaining 200 feet. It eludes me how if it, if a fire engine were to stop at the 150-foot mark, how other vehicles will ordinarily be passing by unless the bollard proposed is one that is only put up at the time of a fire. The houses that are described list the square footage, but it includes 444 square feet of garage, which ordinarily is not part of the square footage. So in fact, these are homes of 2014 to 2303 square footage and a 444 square foot garage. I think most importantly is the impact on the character, the established character of La Playa. La Playa is noted as a distinctive neighborhood within Point Loma and is characterized by large lots and rather substantial homes, and the Peninsula Community Plan specifically states that there should be every effort made to maintain that character, including a statement that the redevelopment of individual lots and development of the few remaining vacant lots in Peninsula's single-family neighborhoods should be compatible with the existing development pattern in terms of scale, placement in buildings, and architectural features. And essentially, it is seeing La Playa as a low-density community. While it's true that within Point Loma there are areas where density is increasing, it is definitely not the case in this area if you simply look at the overhead view. I do confess to being a layperson, and so I don't possess the credentials of the experts, so I'm only looking at it as a concerned neighbor who spends virtually all of my free time doing volunteer work for Point Loma Association. So while the report to the planning commission, in fact, indicates that this proposed development meets all of the code requirements, to paraphrase what I heard in the previous discussion, just because it's allowed doesn't mean that it's desirable or beneficial to the neighborhood. We were of the impression that the Peninsula Community Planning Board voted not to allow this project, and I know that the applicant has dismissed the significance of 280 people in the neighborhood opposing it, but it does seem to reflect the attitude of the community. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Other speakers, Carl Skrag. And I think at this point I want to remind people that if someone's already said your thing, and we will think nonetheless of you if you say, "I agree with previous speakers." I just want to make sure that we get to the deliberation while we're all here.
Carl Skrag, I live at 3343 Harborview. It's directly across the street. If you look at the red tile roof, 3340, go directly south, the gray slate roof is mine. Does that make any sense? Okay. I'm retired, and I have a home office, and the windows of my office look directly out onto this property, and so I'm perhaps in a unique position to have observed what the traffic patterns are and the parking problems are on Harborview today. By my count, the two properties there, existing today, tenants are in those properties, and between them, they have seven vehicles. Now, the people at 3340 do a pretty good job of keeping three or four of their vehicles off the street in a rather large driveway that's in front of that area. That driveway would be eliminated by this project, because that's where the access road would go. So now we would have to have all seven of those cars on the street, because none of them are ever put into the garages. Plus, whatever cars are going to come from the new developments, we're getting to have a lot of cars on what's already a very narrow and congested street, and I see that as a problem. One final comment about the character of the neighborhood. I mean, I'm a newbie, I've only been there 20 years. I have seen no project in that neighborhood that's anything close to this. I have not seen any lot divided. That doesn't mean it hasn't happened, but the whole time I've been there, I have seen no project that was anything close to this in terms of its negative impact on the character of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Sir, can I ask a clarifying question to staff with regards to parking? Very quick, 30-second question. When you're redoing the parcels of land from three to five, the two existing parcels that will continue to have homes on them, does that open them up to different parking requirements? For example, if the home just to the right of most of the maps does not have adequate parking, could that be enforced to have adequate parking in the future?
Tanner French is our traffic engineer. Perhaps you could field that question.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tanner French with Transportation Development. It, I mean, it essentially does open up the other, the other lots, the remainder parcel, if you're looking at the site plan to the right, isn't changing anything, but because the, what is parcel one, is getting rid of their driveway and constructing a new driveway, they are subject to the code requirements, and they're actually putting a third and a fourth parking space onsite to, you know, so, so yes, they are opened up to it, and they've, they've, they've done the code requirements.
Okay. All right, Donald Vaughn.
Hello. Yes.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Robert Jackson. I actually was born and raised at 3343 Harborview Drive, and as far as growing up goes, I just want to testify that I witnessed several times over my life this area collapsing during heavy rains. It's been an ongoing problem every time we have significant moisture. They're building a current wall down on Talbot. It's all the same hillside, and it was brought to our attention that we do have a fault line going through this area. So, and again, I don't think I've ever seen any kind of development in the area where you put three houses behind two existing dwellings. I would just caution the city to be very careful of this for safety issues, earthquake, flooding, there's a lot at risk. So I think everybody really needs to take a hard look at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Milan Miller.
You leave.
Alvin Bieber.
This lady is speaking for Milan.
All right, let's see, I haven't gotten to you yet. I'm sorry, what?
Sherry Rose.
Yes, right, you're coming up.
Milan Lafferty is speaking for him. And I actually don't live on Harborview, I live on Lucinda, which is a couple blocks away, and I truly am a newbie in the neighborhood. I haven't even lived there for a year yet, but it's a very wonderful community, and I met some people at a barbecue. That's where we were talking about this issue and where people signed the petition. But I would like to read what Milan has written here, if you have this document. He said he's, he's living at 3360 Martinez Street since July 7, 1977. That's 36 years. He's had three major landslides on the property, people have mentioned that, and this has cost the city over $700,000 in major repairs. And there are many pictures, you probably have seen those, and he's listed those, and we also just mentioned that the Talbot Street restoration is going on, started 10 days ago, it's going to go until at least February, which actually turns that street into a one-way street. And that issue on that slope, when I moved in, I actually saw that, and I thought, that's kind of a scary slope. I hope that it's, it's safe, and obviously there are issues with it. But what I want to bring to your attention is the, this Alquis Priolo Earthquake Fault Zoni Act, and it doesn't sound like anybody's actually taken the time to really delve into that. I'm going to give this one document here, which actually shows where the line is of the earthquake fault, and this special studies is from December 22, 1972, and at that time, Ronald Reagan was the governor, wasn't even the president. So it's, it's old, and I don't know if anybody's really dived into it, but if somebody has, if our experts take the time to look into that, we should really see what the impact is, not just because of the mud and the landslides, but the possible earthquake issues. And living in Los Angeles County and having experienced the Northwoods quake, that was so scary and so horrible that I wouldn't like to see that happen in this neighborhood. Obviously, you know, that's an act of God, but still, putting more pressure on an area that we already know has, you know, slide issues, and that the fact that they're having to reinforce it should really be looked into, I think, in a deeper level. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Alvin Bieber. Thank you. Richard Glaasner.
He's left.
Janet Richards. You're, you're okay with what's been said before they spoke on your behalf? I believe that's it.
She wants to cede her time, this is Frank Dwyer.
But he already testified?
Yes.
Okay. All right, and then Carla Pekin, you had ceded your time, is that right? Okay. All right, that's it. I'm going to close public testimony. That's all the speaker steps I have. I'm going to move to Commissioner Comment and go first to Commissioner Wagner.
I'll start off by saying that I would be heavily influenced by the Chair and Commissioner Haas, because this is their, their expertise, so what you do say along with the Chair will be meaningful to, you know, how I move forward. I will say that when community members bring up fire issues, or slide issues, or earthquake issues, I think that's less than altruistic. I think that there's another issue that's important to you, you just basically don't like the buildings being built there. And I totally can understand that, but I think it's respectfully disingenuous to be an advocate of police and fire and slide victims and earthquakes when you just don't like the property. Now, it's possible that, you know, three parcels of land may not be best for this particular portion, but maybe two parcels, something like that, but like I said, I'd be heavily influenced by people who, it's their expertise. I, I think there's a huge difference between sticking your community with a whole bunch of condos, like what happens regularly in my community, to where, oh, there's a new parcel, the beautiful old lady passed away, and we're going to build condos there. That's not what's happening. You're going to get some really nice homes, potentially. And when I say really nice homes, I'm born and raised in a 1,200-square-foot home, and then I currently have a 1,600-square-foot home, and I feel pretty blessed to have a 1,600-square-foot home. I work really hard for that. So when I hear that each parcel will have somewhere in the range of 2,200 feet, I think that that's a really nice opportunity for a young person that's able to raise their family, and an asset to your community. Worst-case scenario, they would say, well, we're going to put apartments in there, like what's happens in my community and what happens in Commissioner Curros's community, where you get a whole bunch of apartments, and there's no ownership or community character with the people that live there. They're just transitory, they're there for a year or two. At least with condos, there is some ownership, and at least with a home, you have a wonderful family that can probably afford that. I would imagine that if I would just guess, as a layperson, that's going to be at least a $500,000 to $600,000 home. So you're going to need somebody that's an engineer, or a doctor, or a lawyer, somebody like that that's going to be your neighbor, that's probably going to be younger, that's probably going to have a young family that's going to utilize the schools. So building nothing there probably does not resonate with me. Building something that maybe is tailored for the needs of the community would probably resonate, but bringing up that you're worried about the future people that live there because they don't have access to a fire hydrant, or the hose is going to have to go 436-foot, or there could be an earthquake, or it could slide. City staff, with regards to the three homes that would be built there, I have a couple City staff, with regards to the three homes that would be built there, I have a couple friends that actually built, rebuilt a home from scratch there, and they have pylons. Are there going to be a drill down or a pylon for some of the homes, or are you able to grade enough to have stability?
The concept plans do show pylons of some sort. As a condition of the permit, we would need to have a geotechnical review of each of the buildings as they came in for building permits that would get into much higher level of detail.
And the last thing that resonates with me authentically is a parking issue. And it's frustrating that we shortchange the development with parking, especially with a single-family community like this. So it's really important for me to hear that there is adequate parking. He said to you, there's four more spaces, but I would assume that you have a two-car garage in each, is it one-car garage for the three homes?
Each of the back three have a two-car garage?
Oh, so that's six cars plus another four spots?
And because the code states if you don't have a 20-foot driveway, you have to provide two others onsite. So each of the three are providing a two-car garage and two additional spaces onsite.
And then the last thing that really resonated with me is, we're talking about the length of the driveway, but a majority of the people that live on, a majority of the people that have an address on Harborview Drive utilize almost an identical driveway. Is that a fair assessment? That there's, that driveway there, just on Harborview, just to the right, that long driveway right there seems like it would be similar in scope and size that would be existing for the other property. Is that correct?
Where the cursor actually is, is, if you go, right there, is actually, it's city right-of-way, so it's not technically a driveway, but it is a partially improved, I guess, for lack of a better word, maybe kind of an alley.
What's the, how, what's the length, not the length, but the width?
I couldn't tell you from now. It's not 20 feet.
Perfect. But I guess, if I say the parking resonated, does two-car garage per the three homes plus the four other spaces, does that seem like that would be adequate?
I would say would be adequate if people would use the garages for cars, but as I saw the design, this is going to be a very difficult, likely to return to the garage. And my opinion is, if it's difficult, people will park in the garage.
So, I mean, I can't, as a land use decision-maker, force people to park in their garage, but I can at least do everything I can as a land use decision-maker to help you with your challenge. I think that we're able to adequately address that. So going back to what I was saying, the Commissioner comments in shaping the project or keeping the project deviating in some capacity would resonate with me after I hear what everybody else is saying.
Commissioner Smiley.
Even plotted plants get to talk. Just a couple of loose ends I wanted to tie up here. And Mr. Shoemaker, did the abstentions, were they ever confirmed? I'm reading from the notes of the minutes.
It's my recollection that they abstained because they were new to the board and not familiar with the project.
Okay, but they did, in fact. And the vote for the project review committee, was it four to one or three to two? Mr. O'Dwyer said four to one.
It was four to one. I was the one.
Okay.
With an abstention, an additional abstention for the same reason, new to the board.
Okay. This is a small point, but I want to just connect all the dots. The minutes describe the project differently than we heard today. It says, "A project to subdivide two lots instead of three with an existing single-family But there's two residents currently, and I just wanted to, Mr. Christensen, did you, you briefed it, and are the minutes in error or were there changes? Okay, they're in error. Okay, fine. Thank you.
Commissioner Haas.
Thank you. I appreciate the comments. I want to focus a little bit on the petition. There were three issues that were raised, that were presented to the community. I'd like to go over each one of those with staff. I can understand why, if the community felt that there was going to be a life safety issue or a fire issue, there'd be a concern, and they would sign that petition. I do want to hear from staff how those have been addressed. Whether you agree or not they've been addressed is different, but clearly, they're important. So why don't we start with the first one, which was, or is, "Access for Fire Prevention and Life Safety." I know we've touched on that, but I think I should have the Fire Department representative come up again and explain our rules and why this is acceptable to you all, and in particular, how you navigate flag lots, because the city does have flag lots, and I know you have to deal with those.
Okay. Well, basically, a fire lane is determined, you have to get within 150 feet of all portions of the first floor of any structure. For a non-sprinkler building, 200 feet for a sprinkler building.
And by the way, the new codes require all single-family residents to be sprinkled, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay.
So when I looked at this project, we looked at if the entire driveway was to be used as a fire lane, it would have to be 26 feet wide, and it would have to have a turnaround. So we measured out the fire lane, and at 150 feet, we were able to get that minimum hose pull to 200 feet to each portion. And that's why the fire lane stops at 150 feet. The bollard is there to delineate the fire lane. If the bollard wasn't there or some sort of barrier, you know, to stop the fire lane, then the whole driveway would be considered fire lane.
Okay. And the 20-foot-wide fire lane, or is that what is proposed for this project or the driveway?
Based on the fire prevention policy, any fire lane less than 300 feet is required to be 20 feet wide, minimum.
And that, according to your office, allows two vehicles to pass. One truck can pull in, the next truck can pull around. So, yes, somebody could park in the middle, and that would be a problem, but for the purposes of emergency response, that's adequate for your needs.
If you had a fire engine in the 20-foot aisleway, another rig would be able to get around it, yes.
Okay. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. I think that clarifies it for us, for me, anyway. The second is the negative impact on the established character of the neighborhood and the increased parking density on Harbor Drive. Why don't we take that as a two-part question? This is one of those ones where if you build them too big, we're building McMansions, and now if we're building them too small, we're not in character. In my personal opinion, if you build them the same, then we're boring. But I think that the most important question really is this issue of whether or not density is being increased. So staff, if you could respond, is this an increase in density?
Yes, it is, because currently, there are two homes, and if this project were to be approved and constructed, there'd be five homes. The community plan designates the site for nine units per acre. So when we referenced that number, we were saying the designation under the plan would generate nine homes per acre for this site. However, five are being built, and three would be new.
So we're increasing on an absolute number from two to five units, but based upon the land use designation and the zoning, where nine could be allowed, we're only building to five?
That's correct.
Okay. And then, from a standpoint of looking at community character, and perhaps someone in the community can look at the Peninsula Land Use Plan and tell me, where is La Playa? You said it was a subset of the community. If you could just give me the boundary so I understand that?
Roughly, the boundaries are...
I'm looking at attachment to in the staff report.
Sorry. Roughly, the boundaries are south of Talbot Street.
Everything's south of Talbot?
Roughly.
Okay. Great, thank you. I wasn't familiar with the specific sub-area in the community plan. When we talk about community character, then, in the context of this permit, we're looking at zoning, and then we're looking at perhaps FAR, or we're looking at the general design of neighborhood of single-story or multi- or two-story structures. What would be the key community character issues in evaluating this project?
Good afternoon, Raynor Avalos, Development Services Department. All of the above. We would be looking at bulk and scale, roof types, roof structure height, setbacks, site design, potentially architecture, but in this particular area, you really have a diverse mixture of architecture, but all of that would be taken into consideration.
So the community testified that roughly the average square footage of a house was, I believe, 2,900 square feet, and the average lot size was 10,000 square feet. While those might exceed the existing zoning, what did you find is the range of home types in the neighborhood? Are there lots that are comparable to the lots being proposed, which are about 6,500 square feet? Are there homes in the 2,000-square-foot range?
Tony Captain is a long-range planner, I believe. Perhaps he could answer that question.
I appreciate that. I'm trying to understand what we found in the neighborhood, because I know there's a range. When we average things, there's a range of homes.
Yes, there is a range. The neighborhood is an eclectic mix of housing and housing styles and sizes, anywhere from 2,000 all the way up to 5,000. So you see quite a range of styles.
And would we find in the historic subdivisions, not talking about something that may have been subdivided from the time it was originally mapped, would we find lots in the 5,000 and 6,000-square-foot range? Would that be common or uncommon, or?
There is an area that has lots of up to 10,000 feet and greater, actually, around Canyon Street, I think it is.
Okay.
And this is very close to this area, so.
And I'm familiar with canyon in some areas, which are fairly steep slopes, and so there's a lot size that might be usable versus quite a bit of it's unusable. Do you know that if, are the 10,000-square-foot lots then contain certain slopes and things that might not be usable? I'm just trying to understand the nature of the lot pattern. I know this isn't a gritted-out neighborhood like we have in some communities.
The area is sloped, and the lots slope back to the rear of the lot, but in terms of buildability, I couldn't tell you what the constraints would be on that.
All right.
But people have built on the rear of the lots in that area.
Okay.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Commissioner Haas, if I could just point your attention to the screen. This represents the zoning map for the vicinity.
Oh, that's a good illustration. Thank you.
The property is in the yellow highlighted, dashed. So the property is pretty much smack in the middle of an RS-17 zone, which has a 5,000-square-foot minimum lot size. To the bottom of the screen in yellow is the RS-14. I believe that is a 10,000-square-foot minimum lot size. So just in terms, this also has superimposed on it, it's kind of hard to read with the navy blue, but it has the lot patterns in the vicinity. So you can see that there are many that are actually less than 5,000 and many that are more. So it's, as far as the underlying zoning, that is how the area is zoned.
Okay. And on this illustration, Talbot Street would be just immediately north of the project site? Okay. So the blue area is representative of typical lots, and I'm just, from an estimate standpoint, you think those lots might be 5,000 to 6,000 square feet?
The existing lots, the ones that are being subdivided, those are 50 feet wide. So a lot of these that you would see are 50 feet wide. That was probably the original subdivision pattern for some of those subdivisions. This particular area, obviously, there's Martinez Street and Topographical Constraints on there, so that's probably why those lots were longer to begin with. But most of those that you see there, the smaller widths, the smallest width seem to be 50 feet.
All right, thank you. Again, I'm trying to look at this from a standpoint of getting just a reasonable idea of what constitutes community character from a lot size. Let's move to the increased parking density on Harborview Drive. I understand our older neighborhoods with narrower streets, parking can be a bit of a challenge. These are public streets, so anybody can park on them, and we can't force someone to park in their garage. I think we probably have a lot of junk in our garage that prevents that. But I want to confirm what I understood staff said a little bit earlier, and I want to go through each one of the existing and new homes that would be in part of the Peeling tentative map. Let's start with the existing home to the east, which you said is on the remaining lot, the remainder lot?
Yes.
What will be the parking on that? Does it have a two-car garage onsite that's available for parking?
Yes, it does have an existing two-car garage.
And there's no other off-street parking for that property? Is that correct?
No, it's two parking spaces for a single dwelling unit.
Then the other, the next existing home to the west, that will have a, will end up with four parking spaces total? Can you confirm what I thought I heard?
Yes, it will end up with four. Like I said earlier, the provision is if you have a two-car garage and a 20-foot driveway, you don't need to provide anything else, which is like the remainder parcel you just talked about. But in the new condition for the lot on the west, the left, it will then, it'll have a two-car garage without a 20-foot driveway, so it has to provide two extra, which it's doing kind of parallel to the drive. And then the remainder, the three in the back are also in that same scenario.
So the other four lots will be required to have four parking spaces?
Essentially.
Two in a garage and two?
Two additional, yes.
Okay. And I won't vouch for whether people park in their garage or not. Depends, I guess, maybe on the car that they own. You got to comment?
Could I make your comment? Something as well as...
Why don't you come up to the, thank you.
I need to remind everybody that I will need to leave here in 16 minutes. So if we could really move towards action and give me a chance to weigh in here, I'd really appreciate it.
Let me get this on, and then I have one last question.
If these garages were well-designed, remove my objection, but they're going to be very much like the one existing property that has a narrow driveway, a 90-degree turn, a tight 90-degree turn into a garage. That garage has never been used. I mean, through a whole series of tenants who have lived there, nobody has ever used that garage. Why? Because it's a narrow drive, and you probably have to back and forth a couple of times just to get your car in. And this design simulates that thing, and it probably meets all the code and all the requirements, but in reality, it's not a functional garage. So that's...
I appreciate that, and I would not doubt that you may have neighbors that have stuff in their garage and don't park in them either, so we have a number of things to deal with with that. My last question is to the, regarding geology. There's an existing condition out there. It looks like we have a history of failure, at least three that were documented. By developing this site, will this maintain the existing conditions so we could have failures in the future? Will it increase the potential for failure, or will it create greater stability and eliminate the potential for future failure?
My name's Pat Thomas. I'm an engineering geologist with the Development Services Department, and the geotechnical reports submitted and reviewed by staff included slope stability analysis that indicated this site is stable.
So let me ask the question a little different. At the end of the day, if this site is developed, will the existing condition be improved by that development?
The analysis indicated that the completion of the project, the site would be stable.
Okay. So can I conclude, though, that maybe the site today, because of some of the soil conditions and things, might not be as stable? I mean, I'm trying to...
They indicated in their present state on the site, project site, that the geology is stable.
Today as well? Why don't you come up and answer that question real quick? Because you mentioned about, you know, I know, I understand all these conditions, so...
Unfortunately, Pat wasn't able to go down the borings and beyond the site like we were. When we finish the grading, the whole upper area where the structures will be located will be stable, beyond dense natural materials, and drainage will be corrected. So like a half an acre of drainage that now goes down towards Martinez Street, no longer goes.
Okay.
But the main thing is, we cannot go down into the sensitive habitat areas. These failures are down on the lower hillside, sloughing off towards, they're down in the sensitive habitat. We're not working down there. We can't go down there. So we can't help these people dealing with the failures that they see. They're down in the natural terrain. They're outside the project area.
The existing net will stay the same, but that you will improve the runoff from the new portion?
Absolutely. And the fault, we trench for it. The lucky neighbors to the east, they own the fault. They have their own private fault. It's not on this property.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kuros?
I will just thank Commissioner Haas, because he's got every answer that I needed to get. Thank you. So I can do this very, very quickly.
Only the questions, not the answers.
Does Mr. Peeling own all three of the current lots?
Yes, he does.
And he will own all of the five, or will he be selling them off separately?
I can answer that. Perhaps Mr. Peeling could answer that.
I don't know that, yes. Would you be willing? Would you be willing to answer that, or?
Do you have any questions?
Once you've split it up?
Do you have your own?
Right, once you have five different parcels, are you going to keep them all?
I plan on keeping them.
Okay.
I mean, I can't talk to the people that I have no, I have no immediate plans for anything. I'm just trying to secure...
Okay. Thank you. I do have a couple of issues with the staff report, and since it is the exhibit, I wonder if we can just deal with them. Page three, it has the table, which, when you put the table up on your slideshow, actually fixed the problem that I was just completely confused by, which is your thing under remainder, which says the lot area is 6,678 and the home is 6,679. Would you agree that?
Yes, that was a typo in the report. My apologies. I meant to correct that at the beginning of my presentation, but the slide you showed, you were shown, Slide 8, does have it correctly, as the existing home is 1,541.
You have no idea how much you went, oh, for that one. And then on four, NIM, it's under project-related issues. It says drainage from the site will be directed into the existing public sewer system. Do you not mean storm drain system? You seem to be talking about storm drain.
Yes. So the blue line shown here is the new drainage, the proposed drainage system. So there's a catch basin on the east side along the property line at the top of your screen. It would flow down to the west, go north downhill, and then Martinez Street is a public right-of-way in that area. So the applicant, but there are no public utilities within the right-of-way. So in order to get to reach public utilities, the applicant would trench and go underground and connect to the city system, which is within the Bangor Street and Talbot Street right-of-way, which is...
You're missing the point. Which system is it? Is it the public sewer system or the public storm drain system?
It's both. So on your screen, the screen here, the blue is the storm drain line, and the green would be the sewer line. So they're both traveling downhill and traversing Martinez and then going into Talbot Street and Bangor to hook up with the city utility systems.
And when you say that green is the sewer, are you talking about the sewer from the house? You're talking about our normal sewer system? Because your discussion is all about the storm drain water, the runoff, right? And it talks about the sewer system. And I'm just trying to make sure that we're not, we're not, I'm confused, because it seemed, you seem to be saying that the storm drain water is going to be going into the sewer system. And it's my understanding that's not something...
The two utilities aren't going to be commingled. There is a sewer lateral, and then there is a private storm drain. They will both be traversing Martinez to Bangor to separate utilities.
Separate, okay. That's perfect. In that case, I have all my answers. So if we could just make that a little clearer in the report, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
So this one is, let me speak first from the neighbor's perspective. If you could bring up the aerial view of the zone there. I mean, when were the two houses on the parcels now, when were those built? Or do we know approximately?
1948.
I'm sorry, 1948.
1948.
1948. So for more than 60 years, this has been the prevailing condition in this part of La Playa. And I think that on some level, it's pretty easy to get used to the way it presently sits. And when you look immediately on either side of these parcels, what you see is something more akin to what's being proposed on some level, albeit not three houses, but this idea of houses in front of other houses that draw their access from Harborview Drive. So the applicant, in a way, is trying, sort of taking the lone green spot in that area in there and filling it in with stuff that's more akin to what the neighbors presently already enjoy. Right? I mean, just, in just the simplest kinds of terms, that's what's really happening here. And because he has three parcels across, in terms of width, he's got kind of a lot more room than, say, the property that was to the immediate east, which probably added a home pretty soon after it was built, if it was 1928-year home, sir. If it was built that early on, it was probably done really quickly after it was developed, I would think. I don't know when this was laid out, but all to say that this strategy of sort of infilling smaller lots in what used to be larger lots is a pattern of this part of the neighborhood. If you zoom out to the thing that was the lotting pattern, you had an exhibit that was the lotting pattern for just a second. Yeah, it's that one. If you put those two together, right under the word San Diego and the one immediately to the east of it, and you compare that against the size of all the parcels around it, very few of them are even close to that size. So we have a situation here where somebody has essentially provided a kind of visual open space for the neighbors for many, many years. And that's just the way it is. And we've all gotten used to it. Everyone's gotten used to the idea of it. So the question is about that for me is, what's the fair and right thing to do in terms of how people perceive these things? Are there any rights that people have or expectations they ought to have about subdivisions on that basis? And I'm going to suggest to you that on this lotting pattern, community character-only piece, this is a reasonable request. You may not agree with me on that, but when you look at the size of lots, and the size of lots of some people who came and spoke here, they're much smaller than the property in question. And they'll be very akin to the size of the lots in the end that are there. So I'm not swayed by that piece of the argument, frankly. I think the idea of subdividing this thing and taking things behind other things is clearly a historic pattern in the neighborhood. Whether or not community character can then also extend beyond lotting patterns and into architecture, into other kinds of things, I mean, we talked about setbacks, scale, massing, et cetera. Those are things that I would suggest this proposal from a size-of-home thing, if anything, the complaints seem to be they were too small. So, you know, on some level, I could understand how that would suggest that maybe it's not fitting into the character expectation of the neighborhood. This is a very nice neighborhood, by the way. It is, and I understand a sense of pride about it, because it is a very nice neighborhood. Having been on that street many times, I can tell you, it's a terrifically wonderful neighborhood. So I get the concern about that. The issue about access, let's get to that. I mean, I think the fire official really did deal with that. I understand as a layperson why you'd look at that and think that that wasn't a really adequate response, but trust me, that's exactly how fire access happens, day in, day out, all over the state of California. The fire code presently says that you can drag, drive 150 feet into a parcel, and if you want to stop the fire apparatus at that point, and you can prove that you can pull your hoses to the right locations, you don't have to go any further in. So it doesn't sound intuitively correct, but it is, in fact, exactly how the fire code's written. And a 20-foot lane, as we've been described, is certainly adequate to get around a fire apparatus, assuming it doesn't park in the middle. But I'm thinking that in the event of emergency, people are probably not trying to get in, they may be trying to get out. So there is a question there about that piece of it, but frankly, a 20-foot-wide fire lane is absolutely the standard for how this sort of thing is done. And so it's very difficult for us as a decision-maker to then regulate something beyond the standard that everyone else has to adhere to, to suggest that it isn't, it's adequate everywhere else but somehow not adequate here. So that's a real problem. That's a conundrum for me as a decision-maker, because we have to base our decisions on the accepted practices and the standards and the codes as they're written. And the codes as they're written, they're providing adequate fire and emergency access to that property. They are, in fact, putting a new hydrant right along the street there, so the idea of having to go 400-some feet is not an issue. They will provide direct access right there in terms of water from a fire hydrant. So the fire and emergency access piece for me is also not an issue. The last piece was this idea about stability of slopes and the idea about landslide. That's the one that really has me concerned, frankly. Now, hearing the geologist who's looking at it, I'm hearing the staff geologists who are looking at it are saying that these things are going to be okay. And I'm sure that all of you are going to walk away from here today saying, it's not going to be okay. We've lived here forever, we've seen all this activity, we don't agree. And I totally understand that. I completely get where you're going with that piece of it. And I don't know if I could have the applicant come forward and if you could talk just for a minute about what it is that you intend to do relative to foundations on these buildings to address. I mean, are you grading out the tops of these slopes? I want you, sir, to come to the microphone and maybe your engineer could help you.
There is quite a bit of grading and retaining wall, and then there are pylons only in the front. And then there'll be drainage directly in the front. And I might add that, they keep talking about all these landslides, but these landslides, nothing's been on our property. It's all south or below the road cuts.
Well, whether that is or not, I think what that suggests is this idea that that slope in general is not stable, and that's the perception.
Well, I mean, we did a tremendous amount of core drilling. We're going to put pylons into the core, you know, into the bedrock, and then there'll be retaining walls and grading on the backside. I mean, part of it's flat, or close to flat.
I understand. So when you grade into the area that was highlighted earlier, which is directly behind the larger of the two...
Right.
You're going to pull all that out and you're going to recompact that, put that back, and you're going to drain the paths of the house to sit towards the drive, catch it in the storm drain, and get it out of there. So essentially, the only water that will flow off your parcel towards Martinez will be the thing, the slope, the existing slope, behind the houses to the north of the houses.
Right. In my mind, we're dramatically improving the stability and the drainage.
Okay, well, you will at the very least be removing some of the water that presently flows over that hillside.
Well, and it flows all the way from Harborview.
No, I understand.
So we're removing over two-thirds of it.
Right, I understand. That's where I'm going with that, is that a lot of the water that presently flows down that hillside is going to be captured in a storm drain system and pulled away into the storm drain system.
Correct.
It will not, no longer go down the hillside, at least until the north sides of these homes.
Correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate that. So I guess the conundrum for me is, I get and understand the concern about a feeling that there's, this is sort of a, if I could suggest the neighbors feel like these things are getting shoehorned in here, that they're getting too much into too little of a space. Is that a fair assessment? Yeah, I mean, I understand exactly that thing. But again, when you go to that aerial view, the thing that we have to all recognize is, we're looking at a pretty extraordinary piece of property in the neighborhood that presently doesn't have a lot of that going on. So we've got a situation here where we have a whole series of codes and regulations about how this gets done, and I don't have a lot of leeway in terms of all that to say that this is not a good idea, that we can't do this, because we've gotten used to it, or that it's fine. I mean, there's a pretty significant amount of green space in that slide right there that's going to go, you know, at least half of that's going to go away when you look at houses in there. And some of them are going to be very close to you, sir. And I understand your concern. I completely understand your concern, but the thing is, is that I have very little grounds in terms of decision-maker, in terms of the findings we have to make, in terms of the way that the regulations have been applied, to say that's a bad idea. They're meeting all the regulations. So I'm quite certain, mind me saying this, I'm not going to convince any of you that that's still the right thing to do. I'm just saying, in terms of being able to make a reasonable, rational, defensible decision up here, I can't support not supporting this, unfortunately. I think there could have been a better version of this, but right now, I can't find a thing that would suggest that it shouldn't be done. So there's no motion on the floor yet, and we're going to have to go to a motion here, because I need to go, but I will not support, I will support the project as designed.
Mr. Chair, why don't I move staff's recommendation on this? I appreciate all the testimony today and the community's testimony. I am pretty swayed by our professionals and their review of this project.
Second. So there's a motion by Commissioner Haas, a second by Commissioner Smiley. Any further comment before we vote? So we would need four votes to pass this motion. In the event that we don't get four votes, this will have to trail to the next meeting, where we will get two commissioners back and have to, they will have to look at the tape, we'll have to reconsider and take a new vote. So I just warn you in advance, if it doesn't go to four votes, we'll have to trail. Okay? Is everybody ready to vote?